You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next, the December sixth meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by going to www dot access laporte county dot org.
Today is Tuesday, December sixth. Regular council meeting. If everyone would silence their phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. All right, Ms. Mylup on the roll.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch. Hi, I mean here. Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus. And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have seven present and two absent.
And I did. I've known for a long time that Ms. Jagus will not be here and Mr. Fitzpatrick may join us virtually. I know he's homesick and we don't want to get get sick from him. So he's staying at home today. All right, approval of the minutes for approval of hybrid Zoom, November fifteen, twenty twenty-two council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second by Councilman Don Prabulinski and second by Councilman Paul Prabulinski. Ms. Mylup on the vote.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Are there any reports of any standing committees?
Ah, Madam President.
Yes.
Being on the Utilities Committee, just wanted to respond to the sanitary district and any communications coming from Long Beach yet as far as the half a million dollars that they owe us. And there has been no correspondence yet from the town of Long Beach on that amount of money coming back to the city.
All right, thank you. Any additional reports? In Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. There was not a finance committee held on today. So today for claims docket. Fund number two zero four two Riverboat Claims, zero dollars. Fund number two zero three Boyd Development, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Total claims, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This claim is for year-end invoice projects from the Economic Development Corporation. For a total of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I just have one question in regards if Controller Hoffmaster can confirm this or not. I called in a question as to why the large amount for the year-end invoice. And from my understanding, it's normally done in two payments. One in June and one towards around this time of the year. Opposed to just sending this invoice in a lump sum.
Yeah, I think this summer it just got overlooked and they did not submit the fifty percent of their invoice. This is their annual contract with the city. So and it just it just got overlooked this summer. So when we realized all the money was still in the budget, I just asked them to send the invoice for the whole year.
Okay, and that that oversight, do you know how long ago or how far back that was from?
I was gonna say, that's what is normally budgeted though, right?
Correct, one hundred and fifty thousand is their annual contract. We, in the past, we they've invoiced us seventy-five and seventy-five. But just this summer, it just got overlooked.
Okay.
Um, you know, I mean, you know, no harm, no foul, I guess. It's the same amount of money, whether we pay it twice at seventy-five or once at a hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, claims docket for December sixth, twenty twenty-two. And we have fund two zero three one Boyd Development for a hundred fifty thousand dollars in claims. Do I have a motion?
I move for adoption.
Second.
We have a first by Councilman Paul and a second by Councilman Michael. Ms. Mylup on the vote.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Mack.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Are there any reports of any special or select committees? Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, Madam President, if I could just also add the Riverboat Statement Cash. Statement of cash position fiscal year to date, December fifth, twenty twenty-two. Ending balance is four million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred thirty dollars, eighty-nine cents.
Awesome. Four million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred thirty dollars and eighty-nine cents. Thank you. All right, are there any reports of any special or select committees? Special or select committees? All right. Reports from the mayor or any other city officers or departments. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief Steve Forker, Michigan City Police Department. Just wanted to give a quick rundown of our month of November. Police took two thousand nine hundred ninety-one calls for service. Which was up from twenty twenty-one, which we took two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine. Reports taken was was down from this year. At four hundred and eighty from six hundred and twelve and twenty twenty-one. Citations or tickets issued was up this year at four hundred and thirty-three and from three hundred and seventy from last month. Or from last year. A few other things going on within the department. We recently saw the resignation of two of our officers. Officer Douglas Abraham, who had one one year of service and Officer Zach Wells, well, three years of service. They have both left us for other departments. Abraham going to Porter County, which conducting, I would say, an exit interview with him. Was kind of his dream department. He applied there several times before coming to Michigan City. And then was recently again applied. And was awarded the opportunity with them. And then Officer Zach Wells, losing a good officer there, experienced three years. It has left us to go to South Bend. When conducting an interview with him cited money and just he thought more opportunities within the bigger department. And our staffing issues. So he's been a productive officer for us and we've been talking about giving him opportunities within our department. But we just haven't been able to with our manpower issues. So he saw the just thought that was best for him and his family. So we wish them both the best of luck on their future careers. On January, we are well, I would say in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna see the retirement of three officers. Officer Charles Henderson, a twenty-six-year veteran of Michigan City Police Department, is set to retire on January eleventh. Captain Jeff Leneski, his last day with Michigan City Police Department will be March third. With twenty-five and a half years of service. Officer Al Shuts, his last day will be March eleventh. And again, twenty-six years of service. So amongst them, you know, we're losing a significant amount of experience with them. They've served this community for all of them for twenty-five years plus. So they they've gone above and beyond. We want to wish them well on their retirements. So again, we continue to come up here and talk about our shortages and things that, you know, we're working on. That's a big thing of mine right now. We we have to recruit, we have to retain. So we're, you know, we're actively meet again on Monday with our recruitment and retention team. Generating some ideas, we are Captain Jesse, Officer Ravor, they're graduates of IU Bloomington Police Academy. So they've set up an appointment to go down there and just a meet and greet with the with the academy there. And then we're doing the same up here with P and W, just to meet or get met here. So again, just some of the things we're working on, we just had our, sorry, I'll finish up shops shop of the cops. We did yesterday was great with Share Foundation, Social Learning Institute and Michigan City High School. We had seventy shoppers and we were able to to outfit with them with some things they need, some things they want. So it was a great experience, so. And we want to thank Nipco for the generous donation to help with that this year, so. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief? While we got them. We appreciate you supplying the information though. Thank you. All right, Ms. Mylup, any petitions?
A petition was received from Health Link Incorporated to vacate a portion of public alleyway in the city of Michigan City located north of Alfred Avenue, south of Joy Street and west of Jefferson Street and east of Vacated Adams Street.
And I know we we do have some folks on the line from Health Link that may want to speak during the first reading of that we have on the agenda. Ms. Mylup, any communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on November tenth from La Porte County Court Two regarding a summons filed by Thomas Decola. In accordance with ordinance number four five three eight, an accident report was received that took place on eleven four twenty twenty-two involving MCPD vehicle. Another one on ten twenty-two twenty twenty-two involving a police vehicle and also on September twenty-second. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on November thirtieth from Attorney Jewel Harris regarding the proposed board maps.
Awesome, thank you. First resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Michigan City Transit of General Fund one zero zero one for the year twenty twenty-two in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Jarius.
And I would ask if Controller Hoffmaster can just speak to what this is since Councilwoman Jagus can't be here.
Yes, this is just asking for a transfer within the Transit Department. Decreasing their salary and wage line fifty thousand and increasing their diesel fuel. So their budget has suffered like all of our other ones when it comes to the fuel prices.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Any comments?
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Support.
All right, we have a a just lost my train of thought. A motion on the floor from Councilwoman Tracy Tillman and a second by Councilman Paul and Councilman Bryant Dabney. Ms. Mylup on the vote.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, the resolution passes. Ms. Mylup, the first ordinance, first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only. An ordinance vacating a public alleyway in the city of Michigan City located north of Alfred Avenue, south of Joy Street, west of Jefferson Street and east of Vacated Adams Street. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Deitch.
Yes, and this ordinance is in reference to the Health Link announcement that was made over the last week to vacate an alleyway and and we have some folks from Health Link, so I will open it up for public comment and ask that I think there's some folks from Health Link if they would, if you would give them access to being able to speak. If you would like to speak, would you raise your hand on Zoom? So the CEO Beth Grovel has her hand. Right.
Do I have the mic?
Yes, you do.
Thank you, and this is for the area goes right through our new proposed building where we will expand the capabilities of providing primary medical, dental, behavioral health and optometry to the underserved population of Michigan City and the surrounding areas. So it's an essential to get that vacated so that we can begin our construction and we we have appreciated all the support from the city to this point. And so I'm, but that was my comment on support of the the vaca- vacating of the alley.
All right, thank you. Any additional, if there's anybody online who would like to speak, just raise your hand and we will give you access to being able to speak. Anyone else? All right, is there any comments from the public? Yes, Mr. Kalavich.
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I looked this up on Beacon, it's basically just their vacant lot where they're gonna be putting their new new clinic for Health Link. And then we had just go ahead and vacate where the alley is supposed to go through there and move this to third reading, let them have it. I think it's really exciting, I understand we're gonna get a new Ivy Tech campus there soon and I just go ahead and move this through, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Yes, Mister, I'm not, I'm gonna mess that, Mister Austin?
Uh, yes. Austin Blomke from Jones Peter Rafinsky. I just wanted to give a little bit of I guess explanation of the existing conditions. Currently, this alleyway is unusable. There's fences that go around it. And it's it's heavily wooded. So the public isn't going to be losing out on a functioning alleyway as it is right now. And this project is just gonna be a benefit for the community.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Any additional comments from the public? Are we good, Drew? No others?
No.
All right, any comments from the council? Any comments from the council? All right, this will be held over for second reading. Ms. Mylup, the second hour ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section ninety-eight dash eighty-six and ninety-eight dash eighty-seven of the Michigan City Municipal Code known as a waiver of annexation and connection of adjacent municipality and consent to merger to amend the annexation condition and procedures. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Jagus, Mr. Don Presbleinsky, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Paul Presbleinsky and Mr. Dabney.
Are there any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? I will make one, this was in reference to a workshop that we held, getting some feedback from other local towns and municipalities and the county on some of the the questions that they had. So we cleaned up the some of the language, there was some uncertainty around deannexation of some of our neighboring towns and that has been removed from the the ordinance that we passed. And once this is if this goes through, we will then make sure that we have the documentation and the waiver forms and all that prepared for the beginning of the year to go along with the the new ordinance. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any comments online? Or comments online? Any comments from the council? Comments from, yes, Councilman Paul.
Madam Chair, can you add me as a sponsor? Or, oh, you're looking.
You're on there.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm one ahead, I'm sorry.
You're on there. All right. Any additional comments from the council?
Yes, I'd like to be added as a sponsor as well.
All right, thank you, Councilman. All right, any additional comments? All right, this will be held over for a second reading. Third ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending the red re-districting of six legislative wards of the Michigan City Common Council established by section forty-two dash thirty-two of Municipal Code of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And we had a workshop prior to our city council meeting to begin the process of reviewing some of the maps that were presented by the and her na- her name is Ms. Kaufman, but she does this for multiple cities. And our attorney has been involved in making sure that we've received the information. So with that being said, are there any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, actually, you know, I've always long felt that it's time for time has come to pass for Michigan City to begin to operate and function as the city of the third class. We've been under a population of thirty-five thousand ever since the nineteen seventy census. We cut down to five ward councilmen to a larger cycle port and mayor would serve as the president of the city council. The clerk would be reclassified as the clerk treasurer. Now, I don't know if we eliminate the inmates population from the third ward. So I'd probably be redistrict across the street under the third ward where I could run for council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any additional comments from the the public? Any additional comments from the public? All right. But council I'm ready to get out of here, I guess. Comments from the council, yes, Mr. Prabulinski?
I would just like to be added as a sponsor for this ordinance. And also, I want to make one quick comment that in my perspective of these ward maps that my intention is to look at to have the least disruptive change for the citizens of Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? Any additional comments? This this will be held over for second reading. Oh, on new business. Okay. All right, so in new business, the first order of business, Mayor Perry is asking the Michigan City Common Council for their advice and consent regarding the reappointment of Ms. Virginia Keating as a member of the Michigan City Cemetery Board. Term will begin immediately and expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Are there any, is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, I make a motion to accept, support.
And support by Councilman Gene Simmons. Ms. Mylup on the vote.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, perfect. Congratulations, Mrs. Keating. Ms. Keating. The second order of business, Mayor Perry is asking the Michigan City Common Council for their advice and consent regarding his reappointment of Ms. Renee Bauer as a member of the Michigan City Cemetery Board. And that term will begin immediately and expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five as well.
Motion to nominate? Support.
And we have a motion by Councilman Don and support by Councilman Gene. Ms. Mylup on the vote.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, as an FYI, the Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association due to Ms. Esther Gunchen resigning from her appointment and the term begins immediately and would expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Approval of council, twenty twenty-three council meeting dates. And then as an FYI, thank you, Ms. Mylup. The twenty twenty-three Common Council Board Appointment Expiration Dates. And this is for informational purposes only. And before the final meeting of the council in the calendar year, the clerks shall produce for the council schedule of the positions on the various boards and commissions to which the council makes appointments, which will become open in the next calendar year. And the dates those positions will become open. Under unfinished business, we have several nominations for this evening. The first one being the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Women's Commission representing a non-for-profit organization dealing with women's issue issues. Term expires December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two and the incumbent is Ms. Nicole Coleman. Have we received any forms for nomination?
No, we haven't received any applications.
All right, so if you I'll, I am the liaison, I'll reach out to Ms. Coleman, but if you know of someone who would be interested from a nonprofit organization, have them fill out our council form before our deadline of our next meeting. Next set is the not, the council has two appointments to the Redevelopment Commission representing the council. Term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Incumbents are myself and Ms. Kathy Dennis. Ms. Mylup, do we have forms for that position?
Yes, I received one from Geraldine McCab. Stacy Dudley, Kathy Dennis and Angie Deitch.
All right. I will open it up for nominations, Ms. Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to nominate Madam President Angie Nelson Deitch to the Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so there's are there other nominations for the Redevelopment Commission?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Stacy Dudley.
Support. I'd like to nominate Kathy Dennis.
All right.
Wait a minute.
We don't do, well, we don't do second.
Yeah, you don't have to, so we we have three nominations. Is there, are there any additional nominations for the Redevelopment Commission?
Okay, I need a second on Kathy. Who did the second?
You know, we know.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
You did.
No, you don't.
Okay.
So we have three nominations for for the Redevelopment Commission.
We'll take the vote at the next meeting.
Yes. And we will vote on the Redevelopment Commission at our next meeting. So we have three nominations, we have Stacy Dudley, Kathy Dennis and Angie Nelson Deitch. Thank you. Nominations, the council has one Democratic appointment to the Fire Merritt Commission. Term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and the incumbent is Desiree Nichols. Have we received any forms?
No, we have not.
All right. So if anyone knows anyone who was interested in that position, please have them fill out that form as well prior to the deadline of the next agenda. Next set of, the next nomination, the council has one appointment to the Veterans Commission representing a member of the service that deals with PTSD. Expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The incumbent is Keith Deveraux, have we received any forms?
No, we have not.
All right. And again, if you know of someone that would be interested, please have them fill out the form prior to our next meeting. The last one, the council has one appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And the incumbent is Kathy Stransky. And do we have any forms filled out?
Yes, we received one from Kathy Stransky.
All right. With the pleasure of the council, Ms. Stransky is here, would you like to say something? Because we will go ahead and vote since it's only one.
I just want to say, I really like being on zoning board appeals. I go out to every place that has that hearing coming up. I look at the place, I I go by two, three, four times to check on it, to make sure that what they have submitted and what they're doing is the same. And I would like to stay on the board if I could, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. If no one is opposed, since we have one form, one nomination, can we get a a motion?
Second. I mean, no, I'm making a motion, second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Paul and a second by Councilman Don, Ms. Mylup on the vote.
Ms. Tillman. Aye. Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
And we have seven in favor and no one opposed.
All right, congratulations. All right, are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, a couple of border works and safety meetings ago, they approved a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for ten bus shelters. I think that's way too much, that's thirteen thousand dollars a bus shelter. I don't think we should be spending that much on those. I don't think we need, we need bus shelters, we just don't need fancy bus shelters, both the constructed aluminum, they could be real real more simple. I go to other cities, I know it's a lot of the train stations and a lot of the bus shelters, they're targets for graffiti and vandalism and whatnot. A lot of the bus shelters, when you go to other cities like Chicago, they actually have a digital screen with showing the GPS showing the time down to the minute when the bus is gonna arrive at your stop and they also have the app where you can track the bus and they also have mobile transit apps and whatnot, but I think the ARP Committee, they need to look at maybe getting some, going a little cheaper on that, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public? Thank you. Additional comments from the public? Additional comments from the public? All right. Comments from anybody online? Comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul.
I, uh, just want to remind everybody that, uh. To thank your veterans for their service and that tomorrow, December seventh. Is a day that I, I believe most people, I hope. Most people understand what that day means and, uh. That was the attack on Pearl Harbor. And, uh. It was in the seven thirty-five in the morning. And. Thank you to all the veterans that have served to protect this nation in all of our conflicts. And especially Pearl Harbor, that day of infamy. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments? Yes, Councilman Don.
Thank you, Madam President. And same comments as Councilman Paul Presiblinsky as far as Pearl Harbor Day. Well, one more thing I would like to encourage the. Citizens of Michigan City tomorrow, I, you know, you may have put your flag away already because summertime's over and you don't want to mess with it in the wintertime. But it sure would be nice if everybody that owns the flag would certainly fly it. Tomorrow in honor of all the soldiers and people that dealt with. That particular day and World War Two and all, just in honor of all the veterans. Yeah, that would really be nice. I know I will have mine out. Uh, the second thing. And Councilwoman Deitch and myself were there at the Michigan City Area Schools last Thursday. For the Sussman Prize awarding. And I just wanted to comment on that and I got a little blurb from Betsy Cohn from the school system on what that means. To the city, what that means to the school system and the advancement. In technology that the school system is making for the students. And the children that live in Michigan City. Uh, it's, it was called the Society of Innovators Team Honor. And it goes on to say a team from the Michigan City Area Schools. In partnership with Neo Network Development. Was inducted earlier this month into the PNW Purdue Northwest Society of Innovators. Team members included Kevin McGuire, Jeff Williamson, Keith Bolanowski. Of the Michigan City Area Schools, along with David Volcek of Neo Networks. The team was honored for its work on the Michigan City Area Schools Free Broadband Initiative. And through this project, the district provides home broadband service to hundreds of families with. Students who cannot connect to internet from home or a school-related task. In partnership with Neo Network Development, the Michigan City Area Schools utilize the school-owned fibers as the back hall. And they have placed what's called CBRSs. Antennas on the rooftops of four school buildings using self-installed cradle point access points. Which translation, there are small devices that plug into a home outlet. And then the student households are able to connect to any school-owned or managed device. Including what they call Chromebooks. This provides access for those without internet. For homes that have existing internet, it provides greater bandwidth at the home. So the Richard C. Sussman Prize for Team Innovation. The Society of Innovators may select a team from among inductees each year to receive this. Award. And this year, like I said, the Michigan City Area Schools was honored to receive it. And the Sussman Prize is dedicated to promoting twenty-first century innovation. In private, public, not-for-profit and government sectors. It's a traveling award and will be held by the recipient for at least a year. The award, the award was created in honor. Of the late Richard Sussman, who had a PhD. Former chairman of the Society of Innovators and the head of research laboratory at Arslor Mattel of East Chicago. Uh, the Michigan City Area Schools received a prize due to the profound impact. Of our team project this year and also due to the history of innovation in the Michigan City Area Schools. And Michigan City Area School is also a twenty-twenty team inductee into the Purdue North Central Society of Innovators. For, for the compressor Academy. And that team was led by Clarence Halls and included the air compressor. Teacher Jeff Rochovak and Dr. Eason Watkins, along with area industrial professionals. So in closing, the prize is on display. In, in the front foyer area of the administration building lobby for anyone who would like to come in and view it. And along with a display of someone-on-one technology and other devices that the Michigan City Area Schools. Has had and used over the past few decades, some dating back to nineteen eighties. So I just thought that that was a very noteworthy award and accomplishment by the Michigan City Area Schools. And once again, making our area school system one of the leaders in the state of Indiana. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? That being said, I entertain a motion for.
So move.
All right. We have a motion and second and I'll second it. All done.